Everyone, I will go ahead and call this meeting of the Lloyd'sburg City County School Board to order. The following is the decision.
Dr. Cavassos.
Present.
Ms. Chen.
Present.
Mrs. Donner.
Present.
Mrs. Hunley.
Present.
Mr. Riffle.
Present.
Mrs. Ortego.
Present.
Sorry. I call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Stevens, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Knoll.
Preston.
Mr. Apple.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Isner.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
You're fancy.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. McKay, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pons.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Here.
All right, then with that further ado, I would like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board members, Sheriff Larson, and members of the Board of Supervisors, Mayor Pons, and city council members. We will start this morning with the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-six through fiscal year thirty-five. This morning, Ms. Ewing will present the proposed plan and provide context and background for the recommendations, including information about enrollment projections and current building capacity. Let me set the set the stage with a few pertinent facts. Enrollment at all levels is projected to remain fairly static over the next ten years. Therefore, high school expansions of both Jamestown and Warhol High schools have been placed outside the five-year funded plan, and the request for adding classroom space to James Blair remains outside the ten. Entry level and trailers at all elementary schools except Matoka, twenty-eight classrooms in total. Therefore, we're excited about breaking ground on the. Hundred more than we currently serve. Of note, Bright Beginnings program is already full this year, and it is likely the new campuses will be full in their first year. Opening the Bright Beginnings North and South campuses will enable us to remove all trailers from elementary schools, and it will necessitate redistricting as well. We will continue to visit space needs annually at all levels when we review the updated enrollment projections to plan for future needs. Of note, the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan adds back all of the projects removed by the Board of Supervisors last year, and they're brought back over fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And at this point, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, who will take us through the presentation that focuses mainly on fiscal year twenty-two-six. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Each year, the school division adopts a ten-year capital improvement plan to project and plan for future needs and to allow the localities adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for those needs. This morning, we will be sharing with you a summary of the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-six through thirty, which is the first five years of the proposed ten-year capital improvement. Estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include anticipated A and E costs of ten percent if applicable, five percent for contingency, and the cost estimates within the five years have been adjusted by six percent due to the current volatile market. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, updated enrollment projections, or projects needed for safety reasons. Before sharing information about the CIP plan, I would like to review our enrollment projections from last year in comparison to our current year enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three enrollment was eleven thousand three hundred twenty-four, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of eleven thousand two hundred fifty-six to a high of eleven thousand six forty-six. Our actual enrollment for this year ended up between the low and moderate projection at eleven thousand three seventy-nine, which is represented by the blue horizontal line on the graph, an overall increase of fifty-five students as compared to last year. This slide shows a comparison of our high. Our high school enrollment ended up between the low and moderate projection at three thousand seven seventy-four. This is a decrease of five students as compared to last year. This table shows each of these low projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. Overall, high school capacity is currently at ninety-five percent for the current year and is expected to decline slightly in two years and remain stable for remainder of the ten-year period. Currently, a renovation is underway at Lafayette High School, which will increase capacity, and there are expansion projects for Jamestown and Warhol included in the plan, starting in fiscal year thirteen with design work in Jamestown. This slide shows a comparison of our middle school enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three enrollment was two thousand six ninety-two, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of two thousand six forty-five to a high of two thousand seven forty. Our middle school enrollment ended up between the low and moderate projection for this year at two thousand six eighty-one. This is a decrease of eleven middle school students as compared to last year. This table shows future things low projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle. Overall, middle school capacity is currently at eighty-six percent and is not expected to reach ninety percent until beyond the next ten years. Based on this, phase two of James Blair would not be needed until beyond this ten-year commitment. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment information becomes available. This slide shows a comparison of our elementary school enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three enrollment was four thousand eight hundred fifty-three, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of four thousand eight hundred twenty-two to a high of five thousand forty-two. Our elementary enrollment also ended up between the low production and moderate production with four thousand nine hundred twenty-four students. This is an increase of seventy-one students compared to last year. This table shows the elementary low projected enrollment with pre-K added. Overall, we are currently at ninety-four percent capacity. James River is at ninety-eight percent capacity. Matthew Whaley is at one hundred seven percent, and Stonehouse is at one hundred eight percent. All elementary schools have trailers except for Matoka to assist with skate teams. Trailers are not reflected in the effective capacity in this table as they are a short translation to a rest space. You can see without additional space that elementary schools will remain between ninety-four and ninety-six percent capacity over the next ten years. The design for two pre-K centers is almost complete with construction expected to start in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. Based on this timeline, there would be dedicated pre-K centers beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven with three at stake within the elementary schools. This table reflects updated capacity for the elementary schools with the current pre-K classrooms being utilized beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven for a K-two class, which would accommodate twenty students per classroom. Comparing this new capacity with low elementary projection for this year, elementary schools would be in an overall capacity in fiscal year twenty-seven of eighty-seven percent, though will remain under ninety percent capacity through fiscal year twenty-five. Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse would be over one hundred percent capacity in fiscal year twenty-seven with a pre-K center open. PJ Montague and James River would be ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent capacity respectively. The division will need to go through a review stream process and an inch year in preparation for the opening of pre-K centers. Based on these enrollment projections, elementary schools will not reach ninety percent during the next ten years, so we expect elementary schools not included in the CIP. Because our enrollment has once again been between the low and moderate projection this year, we are also sharing what the elementary capacity would look like with a pre-K center in a moderate projection. Under moderate projection, elementary schools would be in an overall capacity in fiscal year twenty-seven of ninety percent, and on average, in fiscal year thirty-five, would be at ninety-two percent, with PJ Montague, Matthew Whaley, James River, and Stonehouse being over one hundred percent capacity. Before reviewing the updates to the plan, I just want to remind everyone of the projects that were removed and unfunded in fiscal year twenty-five. It was a total of six projects, where two partial roof replacements, two new refurbishments, a refrigerator replacement, and term ending deals. The total of the projects was three point four million that needs to be included in our ten-year planning plan. We have reviewed projects within the plan and moved some projects from fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-seven in order to accommodate adding five of the removed projects into fiscal year twenty-six. One project, repainting the interior and replacing Mervet at Hornsby, has been added to fiscal year twenty-seven. Replacement of the walk-in refrigerator freezer at Laurel Lane has not been added to the CIP plan. It will be funded through Child Nutrition Services. The current cost estimates for this project totals four point two million, of which three point five million has been added to fiscal year twenty-six. We obtain updated project estimates a year prior to anticipated funding from the localities. This table shows the increased cost for the fiscal year twenty-six projects included in the CIP plan. Estimates provided for any projects in years two through ten are placeholders and may change because of active economic forces like inflation, labor shortages, supply chain issues, or other factors that persist longer than anticipated. Cost changes for projects in fiscal year twenty-six from the adopted fiscal year twenty-five amount, total eighteen hundred sixty-four thousand, is outlined on this slide. The most notable change is the Matthew Whaley window replacement. The original amount in the CIP was based on an estimate from the Facility Condition Assessment in twenty-fifteen and did not take into consideration that the windows at Matthew Whaley have a different scope of work than regular windows and must be the architectural review board criteria for this work. The design for pre-K centers is almost complete, and we expect construction to start in the spring. Approved funding to date for the construction and furniture, fixtures, and equipment, or FF and E, for the centers amounts to thirty-five point two million. The updated cost estimate for the construction of the two centers and the FF and E is forty-seven point eight million. Based on this information, we are requesting additional funds in the amount of twelve point six million to be able to complete the new centers. Our fiscal year twenty-four remaining funds, which will be returned to the localities this month, amount to nine point eight million, ninety percent of which, or eight point eight million, is to be retained in our financials account. And we've requested that the localities dedicate these funds specifically to the pre-K centers in order to close the funding gap. If these funds are allocated, then that amount of funding needed will be three point eight million. Here you will see some of the modifications to the ten-year plan, which includes moving the repainting and carpet replacement at PJ Montague and the middle school activity tracks from fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-seven. This was done to accommodate the projects brought back into the plan for fiscal year twenty-six. Adding playground space at PJ Montague, Laurel Lane, and Matthew Whaley. This was a recommendation from the CIP committee to meet the community department of education a recommended amount of hardtop playground seats. Removing the walk-in refrigerator freezer at Berkey in Warhol will be funded with Child Nutrition Services funds. Design funds for the Warhol capacity expansions have been added at fiscal year thirty-one and are being moved to fiscal year thirty-two. In addition to these modifications, there are also projects added at fiscal year thirty-five based on the division's established refurbishment and replacement cycles for HVAC, refurbishments, flooring, roofs, and generators. Our CIP document presents projects by school, and this diagram shows the breakdown by type of project. HVAC and window projects account for thirty-seven point two percent of the total five years CIP, or thirty-three point three million. Refurbishments, roof replacements, and other repairs account for eighteen point one percent of the total five years CIP, or sixteen point two million. Other projects, which include things such as bus canopies, steel turf, generators, and school bus replacements, account for twenty-six point three percent, or twenty-three point five million. And new facilities account for eighteen point four percent, or sixteen point five million of the total five years CIP. The superintendent's recommended five-year plan totals eighty-nine point five million. Some of the major projects within the five-year plan include additional funds for the construction of pre-K spaces. This is twelve point six million of the amount for fiscal year twenty-six. Centralized storage space and operations, and HVAC replacements of Matoka, Stonehouse, Flairburg Baker, and Hornsby.
Ms. Ewing.
Yes.
I need to ask for a brief recess while we fix the audio so that when this is broadcast, it will be able to be heard. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna recess the Board of Supervisors for a moment. Thank you for letting me use your equipment. Thank you. Just take just a moment. I'll call the James City County Board of Supervisors back into session. Thank you all very much. As you can see, thank you team. It is much, much improvement. So, Ms. Ewing.
So that's actually the end of the CIP presentation.
Ms. Ewing, I think there was a suggestion we should do it again. Have you Spanish this time?
Are you serious? I think so much your face is saying, Dr. Herron.
We'd be happy to answer any questions. I can go back and review anything if I need to.
Supervisor McGlinnan.
I just have a question, but I can express my appreciation for the fact that we are going to be breaking ground on the pre-K centers in the spring. It's a very exciting time from a number of perspectives. The fact that we'll be able to have additional capacity for pre-K, that we will be able to free up space for elementary students in the schools across the county, and that taxpayers can get a sense of our fiscal responsibility in this case, and that we also have seen a real level of communication and cooperation among the three partners that sit at the table today. I appreciate that very much.
I did have one. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor Dent, I didn't.
Dr. Herron, that's just one I noticed that the Cooley Field turf was over a six-hundred thousand dollar increase from the projected number in twenty-five. Can you talk a little bit about that project?
Yes, I'll ask Dr. Keever to speak to that, because he's been working very closely with the CIP committee on the different projects. I think there's a natural increase each year. We don't do it, but obviously that's, there might be more to it. Dr. Keever.
Yes. Check. Oh, there we are. Good morning. And the question was about the increase in the cost. The costs have not gone down, unfortunately, when it comes to turfing fields, and the scope of the project remains the same, but the latest estimate came in at that number.
When was the original number developed?
The initial number was developed in twenty sixteen, seventeen, and then we reviewed it again in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then got an additional estimate this year in preparation for the CIP.
We always go back and get an additional estimate just before it comes into the funded year, so the prices is accurate.
Right, and I can certainly appreciate the cost, you know, of things in this economy, but it just seemed like a big number compared to the previous number. And then one additional question, I believe in the details of the CIP, I believe it was in twenty-seven, adding lights to the Stonehouse athletic fields, and I'm not, I'm not familiar with who uses those athletic fields.
Dr. Keever.
Community use, similar to lights on some of our other elementary school or middle school fields. That it is for community, community use, parks and recreation, et cetera.
Okay.
And just while we have the moment, I'd like to welcome Dr. Keever to the table. I'm glad he's got to speak this morning because he will be taking over as acting superintendent on February first, and we're delighted that he's going to be taking the helm. So, welcome, Dr. Keever.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you. The first year that mobile learning cottages were installed, when was that? Well, maybe the first in the district. I'm thinking of Matthew Whaley. Those are the ones that I've seen. But general idea, doesn't have to be the first year. I'm just curious when that might have been.
Mr. Schnipes will probably have the whole history in his head.
Okay.
Mr. Schnipes, you want to come to the table?
Mr. Schnipes is indicating twenty fifteen at Whaley.
Thank you. I just ask, I know each year, we've got to do it, they're mentioned, is not included in the projection as far as percentage of enrollment and capacity because they're temporary, and knowing the starting year is interesting. Nine years now of having mobile learning cottages provides some helpful context. Thank you.
I had a follow-up question too about Matthew Whaley. I wondered if your architectural review, if there was ever any appeal, or if there was, does it have to, does it have to be that type of window? Is there a good fake, or? Okay. I mean, I just, just because that's a huge, that's a big cost, so I was just curious about, okay, thank you.
Don't push it. Oh, okay, so it says push for another reason. Okay. So, the, yes, there is an appeal process, certainly, and the city council actually did make some changes to the design review guidelines, which is what the ARB uses when they evaluate projects, to allow alternative materials to wood in certain circumstances. And so the process would be an application from the district that would then be reviewed by the planning department in context of those design review guidelines to determine if this project would meet the requirements for allowing alternative materials. That process, it's actually a fairly robust negotiation. You go through the ARB, and the ARB's function is to help the applicant achieve success within what the guidelines allows. So, in that process, the district would make a presentation to the ARB as many times as they would like, because the ARB allows what they call conceptual review in advance of an actual application, to try and get the applicant to a place where it's much smoother once they actually file the application. So that would be my recommendation, and then we can evaluate whether or not alternative materials is a good application or not for Matthew Whaley. It's hard to say without knowing his position.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, a question about the, you know, what I think I saw in enrollment numbers at schools after the evolution of the learning, of the pre-K space. I think I heard there will be no trailers at any schools, but I see that Stonehouse and Matthew Whaley will still be over capacity.
Yes, we're obviously moving into redistricting. That discussion is going to start with the board next week, at next week's board meeting, where we'll talk about the RFP going out to hire a company to help us with redistricting. And when we redistrict, everything will be moving north to south, because that's where our greatest increase has been, in the north of the county, and it will move the whole way through the system.
So, would you guess that after the pre-K space is built and the redistricting, that those two schools will be not over a hundred percent enrolled?
They will, they will not be over a hundred percent. That's correct.
Thank you.
You have to push, not push. So, here we go, okay. Dr. Herron, could you speak to, like, the capacity of the, like, the state standard for when we redistrict, what that number would be? Just a little bit more for the public.
State standard of class size or state standard of?
Like, number of students that enrolled in a school after redistricting?
I'm sorry?
Number of students enrolled in a school after redistricting?
Generally speaking, we've actually had an agreement with the three bodies that once we go into over ninety percent, we would consider building a new school, and so we would, planning with the redistricting process, we would want to get all of our schools well under a hundred percent. Obviously, we are in a flat trajectory of increased enrollment right now, so we don't see any huge increases coming over the next ten years, but that's something we look at every single year because economic development, something could impact that, building houses, all kinds of things. So it's something we monitor every single year, but at this moment in time, projections say we'll be fine for ten years.
Were there any other questions for Ms. Ewing or the superintendent?
Yeah, thank you. Going back to cost and pre-K, I know that when we started the pre-K conversation, the estimate was around twenty-five million. Have there been design changes, or is that just a material labor change?
I'm going to pass it to Dr. Keever, because he's been managing that project very carefully. The initial funded piece was twenty-five million, but the original design cost was not. Dr. Keever, you want to speak to where we were at the beginning?
Yes, ma'am. Initially, we were projecting, based on the feasibility study, that the cost would be somewhere between thirty-six and thirty-nine million. When we requested initial funding for design, it was approved in December of twenty-one. If memory serves, that was for somewhere in the neighborhood of three point one or two million dollars to get the process started. We have fairly consistently believed that the cost would be closer to the upper thirties. We're genuinely a little surprised when the estimate came back in late June of this year that it was closer to forty-seven. Subsequently, we've had an additional ninety-five percent review by the construction management firm, which places that number lower than the forty-seven, and we've gone back to both the architect and the construction management firm and said, okay, let's do one more and figure out if the number is closer to the initial estimate in the upper thirties, or somewhere in between that and what came back in late June. We've also gone through the value engineering phase, and that's been incorporated into the design process.
Thank you.
So, Mayor Pons, the initial number of, in the twenties, was what was put in the fund. It wasn't the actual design number.
Thank, that clarifies that for me.
Mr. Riffle.
I think it'd be appropriate time to ask, has the pre-K facilities funding from the state government been added to your legislative agendas this year? I haven't had a chance to review in your last meetings, but it was mentioned.
We took, we took your suggestion for last year, and it is on our legislative agenda for capital projects. I can't speak for the city, so.
Both sides of the diocese there. Has the city incorporated it? So, the next part is like, the state provides seed funding for pre-K facilities. There's ninety million dollars that went out last year through locality funds, and we'll be missing that if both localities don't do that. So, it's kind of, it behooves us to do that.
Sure. Well, if that opportunity exists, I think, you know, the city will certainly support trying to get whatever funds we can.
All right, just one, one last call for any questions for Ms. Ewing or Dr. Herron on the capital improvement plan before we move on. All right, we will move on to the second item on our agenda. There was a lot of interest from both governing bodies to hear another update on our academic outcomes for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. This was presented at a school board meeting, but, but we are happy to present it here at this joint meeting, and, and we're proud to show the results to both of our funding partners. Before we dive into the presentation, I do want to mention that the school board, along with Dr. Herron and senior staff, we have worked very hard on updating our strategic plan. We did not dive into a brand-new one based on many, many changes that have, are still occurring. New school board, potential split, new superintendent, there's just a lot of reasons why it was better for us to revise what we already had, but one of our, one of the biggest changes that we made and that was very important to the board was realigning our priorities so that we really have one priority as a school division, and that is academic achievement, college, and career readiness. And so that is now the top, the priority that we have as a school division, and we have, the supporting priorities are still there, the same priorities we had, safety, security, human capital. safety, security, human capital, positive culture, communications and engagement, and organizational efficiency and effectiveness, which of course are all essential, but they are essential to achieving our key priority, which is, of course, academic success for all students and allowing each student to achieve whatever their greatest potential is. And so, and we also have worked hard to adjust, and attach measurable goals to each of those pillars that, that hold up our key priority. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Ms. Ortego. Yes, and so, we have a new focus, not a new focus, a renewed focus on academic achievement, which has always been there. And obviously, along with the division level focus, every single school has a school improvement plan, and that's how we drive continuous improvement based on each school's data. It's my pleasure this, this morning to introduce the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, Dr. Kathy Worley, and Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, Ms. Shawn Walker, who will present academic progress this morning. Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley supervise all of the schools and everything to do with the schools, but they also supervise curriculum and instruction and academic programs that falls within their supervisory role as well. So, look forward to hearing from you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good morning, members of the school board, members of the Board of Supervisors, and city council members, Mayor Pons. Dr. Worley and I are pleased to be here this morning to provide an overview of the 2023-24 school accreditation, student performance on state SOL assessments, and graduation outcomes. We'd like to begin by first sharing that all 16 schools are fully accredited, which is a celebration in itself. Of course, none of this would be possible without our extremely dedicated teachers, school leaders, support staff, division leaders, all working together in partnership with our families, and all of you, our funding partners.
Good morning. Virginia's current accreditation system incorporates accreditation ratings based on student performance on school quality indicators. Before looking at accreditation indicators, it's important to know how the state measures each performance level. Level one in the green is the green color, indicating performance is at or above the state standard. Level two is the yellow color, indicating performance is near the standard. And level three is the red color, indicating performance is below the standard. The bottom line is to remember, go green. Virginia's current accreditation system incorporates accreditation ratings based on student performance across six quality indicators for elementary and middle schools and nine for high schools. This is an example of an elementary or middle school accreditation dashboard with the six indicators shown above. This school performance dashboard shows all student performance in English, math, and science, overall achievement gaps for student groups in English and math, and the final indicator for chronic absenteeism. These results help the division and the individual schools develop plans for continuous improvement based on areas of need.
So, remembering that statement, go green, this colored chart illustrates the nine elementary schools accreditation ratings and student performance in each of the six school quality indicators. You will notice that all nine elementary schools are at level one, go green, for the all-students category and academic achievement for English reading, which is the first column on the left, also for math, the third column, also for science, the fifth column, and also for chronic absenteeism, the sixth column. In fact, eight elementary schools are at level one, green, for all six school quality indicators. One school, James River Elementary, made tremendous gains this past school year. For example, student performance grew 21 percentage points in science, moving from red level to green level in one school year. This school also has targeted work for gap group achievement as well for its students with disabilities and Black students. But remember, all nine of our elementary schools are fully accredited, and zero schools have a red level three status.
This next slide focuses on the school quality indicators and accreditation rating for our middle and high schools. All middle and high schools are at level one, green, for overall academic achievement in English, the first column, math, the third column, science, the fifth column, and for chronic absenteeism, the sixth column. One school is level one, green, for all nine indicators. Go Lafayette Rams. Additionally, all high schools are at level one, green, for both the graduation and completion index and the dropout rate. Two out of our three high schools are at level one for the College Career and Civic Readiness Index, known as CCCRI. And this is a huge change from last year. All schools made significant positive progress. We do have continued work to do as we support the needs of students across reporting groups to focus on closing achievement gaps with our secondary schools. Four of our middle schools have targeted work this year to continue improving English reading achievement and math achievement with students with disabilities. And finally, all middle and high schools are accredited.
Next, let's take a look at student performance on the 2024 state SOL assessments. WJCC is the green bar compared to the state pass rate represented by the blue bar. The pass rates represent raw, unadjusted data. Simply stated, this means the percentage of past proficient tests, which includes those first-time test takers. It does not include growth and other allowable adjustments for accreditation. As a school division, we outperformed the state average in all five tested areas.
This next graph shows the school division's SOL assessment data for four years. Reading the graph from left to right, the green bar represents 2018-19 data for pre-pandemic reference, followed by the last three years of SOL data, and the orange bar represents the most recent year of 23-24. As a division, WJCC showed improvement across all five tested areas.
As a reminder, starting back in 2018-19, the General Assembly and the Virginia Board of Education's approved state accreditation system began recognizing student growth on the grades three through eight English reading SOL test and also on the grades three through eight mathematics SOL test for those students not meeting the initial proficiency pass rate. The student growth data are factored into the final state accreditation totals for each elementary and each middle school. This slide shows four years of raw pass rates plus the student growth percentages from the nine elementary schools added on top of the raw data for English reading and mathematics. So, for example, looking at the orange bars on this graph, English reading, the 2024 elementary combined raw pass rate was 73% with nine percentage points added on top for student growth, coming out at 82%. Mathematics also had nine percentage points of student growth added into the original pass rate.
This next slide shows the inclusion of growth for our four middle schools, which again is factored into final state accreditation ratings for each school. Growth percentages have been added to the raw data for English and math. For 2024, English increases from 75% to 79% with the additional of four percentage points for growth. Math increases from 73 to 79 with the addition of six percentage points for growth.
Over the last four years, got ahead of myself there. Annually, Virginia school divisions administer the phonological awareness literacy screener, better known as PALS, to all students in grades kindergarten through second grade in early fall and late spring as required by the state. This statewide literacy screener identifies students meeting the proficiency benchmark by the end of the school year. Last spring's results showed that 85% of our students in grades kindergarten, first and second, met the spring proficiency benchmark, which exceeded the previous year's 81% and also exceeds the pre-pandemic score of 82% back in 2019. You can see over the last four years, we've increased 20 percentage points. For your awareness, the Virginia Department of Education partnered with the University of Virginia, and the PALS assessment has been revised, which was a long, three-year process, and it's now renamed the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener, or VOWS, not PALS. This new assessment was administered to all students in grades K through 2 this fall, and it will happen again in late spring 2025. Over the last four years, we've also seen significant growth for our English learner students in kindergarten through second grade based on their spring PALS proficiency scores. Those combined grades K through 2, our English learner student proficiency rate has increased from 30% meeting that benchmark to 62% meeting proficiency. It's a 32% increase over the last four years. Similarly, over the last four years, our students with disabilities in grades K through 2, their combined performance has increased from 39% proficiency to 53% proficiency, an overall 14% increase.
The next few slides take a deeper look at how groups of students are performing on the state assessments within our division. Specifically, we will peel back the layers of data within our state reporting groups. This first slide shows four years of data for five student subgroups, and the orange bar represents 2024 data. The short darker line with the orange bar represents the state's 2024 pass rate for each subgroup. Overall, WJCCC performed at or above the state average within three out of the five subgroup areas in reading. And in fact, we had schools increase their Black, we had 10 schools increase their Black students' reading achievement, which equates to the division's 3% increase you see on the left side of the graph. We are continuing our work to accelerate progress across all groups.
This slide shows four years of mathematics performance for the five student groups. That short darker line represents the state's 24 pass rate for each of the student groups. Comparing the 2024 orange bar to the 23 purple bar, you will see positive gains in mathematics for four of the five student groups and also outperforming the state average in three of those five student groups. Additionally, 11 schools increased their overall math achievement, with 10 of those schools also increasing their Black students' math achievement. This slide shows four years of science SOL performance for the five student groups, with that shorter dark line representing the state 24 pass rate for the same five groups. Overall, when comparing that 24 orange bar to the 2023 purple bar, you will see positive gains in science for four out of the five student groups. And four out of the five groups also met or exceeded the state's science pass rate. In fact, 12 of our schools increased their overall science achievement with zero schools scoring under 70%. There are six school divisions across the state which are like or somewhat similar to WJCC in total student enrollment, number of schools, per pupil spending, operating expenditures, and most student demographics. WJCC and the six like, somewhat similar school divisions are outlined on the map. You will see WJCC data on the far left in green, followed by the six like school divisions in alpha order on the next few slides. This slide shows the all-student performance pass rate in English reading, with WJCC outperforming all six like school divisions. Yes?
When you said like, student demographic similar, like English learner?
Yes, various categories.
Okay, thank you.
This slide shows that WJCC outperformed five of the six like school divisions in mathematics. This slide shows that WJCC outperformed all six like school divisions in science. And now, we'll take a look at how WJCC performed in comparison to a few local school divisions. Our local comparisons are simply just based on geographical proximity and are not aligned with our overall demographics, the number of schools, or student enrollment. So, for example, WJCC has a higher percentage of students with disabilities when compared to these three local school divisions, and it's also very close to being the highest percentage of English learner students when doing this comparison. This slide shows our reading performance compared to three local divisions. WJCC represented on the green bar on the left. The overall raw pass rate for reading is 78%, ahead of two out of the three local school division comparisons. This slide shows the raw math pass rates compared to those same local school divisions. Again, WJCC is represented in the green bar on the left with a math pass rate of 76% ahead of two of the three local school division comparisons. Finally, this slide shows science pass rates with WJCC at 75% ahead of two of our three local school divisions. Chronic absenteeism is one accreditation performance indicator for all schools across the state. We've set high expectations for student attendance in WJCC, and we will continue partnering with families to ensure that students are attending school every day. So, let's take a look at some chronic absenteeism data for our school division. This graph shows data across four school years, measuring the chronic absenteeism rate for WJCC. Chronically absent means a student misses 10% or more of the days enrolled in school. This includes excused and unexcused absences. So, if a student's enrolled for 180 days and misses 18 school days, then that student is chronically absent. If you look at the orange bars on the right during the 23-24 school year, 10.6% for approximately 1,200 WJCC students were chronically absent compared to the state's rate of 16.1% chronically absent. The previous year in the purple shows that we were at 16.2% of students being chronically absent. We've definitely improved in one year's time, and the rates are actually lower than our 2018-19 pre-pandemic rates. So, in partnership with our parents, the 16 schools have done tremendous work engaging students and keeping them in school. Two significant division-wide reductions in chronic absenteeism rates. Our Black students' chronic absenteeism rate dropped from 24% down to 16.7%. Our economically disadvantaged students' chronic absenteeism rate dropped from 27% to 18.9% last school year.
Next, we will share with you information relating to the profile of a WJCC graduate for our class of 2024. There are two key percentages relating to the success of the class of 2024. The on-time graduation rate, referred to as OGR, and the cohort completion rate, referred to as CCR. First, the 2024 graduating cohort of 953 students had an OGR of 95.3% with 51.7% earning an advanced studies diploma and 43.6% earning a standard or applied studies to program. The OGR is captured in the current calculation for state accreditation. Next, the class of 2024 had a cohort completion rate of 98.1%. The CCR rate represents the percentage of students in the cohort that earned a diploma or completed a high school equivalency program such as the GED. You will hear additional information about these two percentages throughout the presentation. Also shown on this slide is the dropout rate of 1.7% for the 2024. This is down significantly from last year, where the dropout rate for the 2023 cohort was 3.3%. This slide provides a comparison of our WJCC class of 2024, the OGR, to the state. Our WJCC OGR represented in green on the left is 95.3% compared to the state rate of 92.8% in blue on the right. And our 2024 cohort on-time graduation rate of 95.3% is the highest it has ever been. This next slide gives a quick snapshot of WJCC compared to our like or similar school divisions. And as a quick reminder, our like school divisions are similar in enrollment, demographics, and budget. The WJCC OGR ra- The WJCC OGR rate exceeds five of the six like divisions in Virginia. This next slide shows WJCC in comparison to the local school divisions, and we exceed three of the five surrounding school divisions. Next, we'll take a closer look examining the on-time graduation rate for the specific demographic reporting groups of black, Hispanic, white, economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities compared to the state. The green bars in this graph display the twenty-twenty-four WJCC graduation rate, and the blue bars represent the state rates for the same group. WJCC outperforms the state in five of the six performing groups, with one group performing with the state. Focusing on the last reporting group on the far right, the twenty-twenty-four cohort had a hundred-and-thirty-three students with disabilities, with ninety-seven-point-seven percent of these students graduating on time. This equates to a hundred-and-thirty of the one-hundred-and-thirty-three students. This is incredible, and we are extremely proud of the continuous work and effort of our teachers and staff supporting all students within our schools. The next slide shows the same five years of trend data as used on previous slides for three additional reporting groups of economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities. Again, the on-time graduation rate is increasing across all three groups, and we are outperforming pre, our pre-pandemic OGR rates in all three performing groups. Next, we'll take a deeper look at the cohort completion rate, which includes the cohorts' on-time graduates in addition to students earning GEDs and students completing high school in five or more years. These completers were able to complete a traditional diploma track or another program of study that provides access to college, trades, other programs, or a direct track to the workforce. The green bar represents WJCC's twenty-twenty-four CCR of ninety-eight-point-one percent, compared to the state's rate of ninety-three-point-eight percent, represented by the blue bar on the right. Our rate is over four percentage points higher than the state. The next slide displays five years of cohort completion rates for WJCC. Starting on the left, you can see that the rate was ninety-five-point-two percent in twenty-nineteen. We have exceeded this pre-pandemic rate over the last four years, with twenty-twenty-four coming in at ninety-eight-point-one percent. The next slide gives you a quick snapshot of WJCC CCR compared to our like school divisions across Virginia. The WJCC CCR rate is higher than all of our like school divisions in Virginia. This slide shows WJCC in comparison to the local school divisions. The WJCC CCR rate is higher than four out of five surrounding divisions and is performing equal to one school division. We've shared a lot of data this morning, however, there are multiple stories and faces attached to the numbers, faces that our school leaders and principals know very well. The next few slides will highlight some of this hard work. Daniel Nelson Lopez Amaya was a twenty-twenty-four graduate at Jamestown High School. Daniel's journey to a diploma started by putting one foot in front of the other. Daniel came to the United States on his own, walking from El Salvador. He worked at least forty hours a week to support himself, on top of going to school. He had a huge task ahead of him going into his senior year. He needed four verified credits and to pass all eight of his classes. It took more than ten attempts at all verified credits last year, an extra tutoring and practice, but he did it. Daniel remained focused even when faced with the pressure to drop out of school in order to meet financial obligations. He embraced the support of his school community, and he was a successful graduate. Lafayette High School was fortunate to have a student like Brayden Lee, who took full advantage of everything high school had to offer. Brayden was a four-year letterman in cross-country, indoor track, swimming, outdoor track, and baseball. He didn't just participate in these sports, he excelled, becoming an all-district, all-region, and even state-level performer. His outstanding accomplishments both on the field and in the classroom earned his recognition from the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. In academics, Brayden graduated as a slatorian, completing over ten AP courses. He was a member of multiple national honor societies and is currently an Echols Scholar at the University of Virginia, where he's, where he is pursuing a degree in business. And at Warhile High School, Levon Jones faced numerous challenges throughout his high school career, including frequent withdrawals and re-enrollments, and ongoing struggle to stay focused on his goals and attendance issues. Levon moved schools multiple times. He briefly enrolled in Job Corps and even considered getting a GED. However, in the end, he remained determined to graduate. With the support of his teachers and staff, he successfully achieved this goal. He never truly gave up and knew that the teachers at Warhile would always be there for him, and he was ready to get the work done. And when he passed that final SOL, he cried and immediately said, "I've got to call my mama." Levon's, Levon's story serves as an inspiration to other students who may be struggling, demonstrating that with perseverance and support, it's possible to overcome challenges and achieve success. The graduation rate is a percentage representing a number. Our school teams know each individual name and face connected, and faces connected with the numbers, including their needs, their strengths, and their goals for the future. They truly care about every child, and they put in the grit, the hard work, and the time to make a difference in the lives of the faces you see on this slide, and as they represent the why behind all we do.
The school year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, we've continued with a student-centered focus aiming for proficiency while also valuing and celebrating student growth over time. School leaders, teachers, and staff are setting high expectations for academics, behavior, and school attendance. Teachers and staff are focused on the delivery of high-quality first-time instruction that engages students in their learning. The teachers are using data from common assessments to gauge that learning and to inform their instructional planning in collaboration with their colleagues. Individual school data drives the development of school improvement plans and frames the work and interventions across all academic areas. Specifically, goals are set for gap group work and school improvement plans, which are based on each school's data. In partnership with our students' families and the community, WJCC teachers, support staff, school leaders, operations, and central office continue working collaboratively for the success of every student in our school division. We'd like you to watch this brief, couple-minute video highlighting some of the celebrations And that concludes our presentation for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you for making this presentation today. Your school liaison committee that meets regularly to think about some of the issues to bring before a group like this really felt it was important to more broadly educate the community and ourselves about what's been happening in our schools. And I, speaking for myself, I'd say that I'm just awed by the ability to bounce back from the challenges of COVID, and in some cases, to exceed the performance pre-COVID. It's really just remarkable. And one of the most important things from my perspective about the data that you presented here is it also gives you targets for addressing continuing needs. We see the powerful impact that the work that's been done on reducing absenteeism has had, and we can target efforts to address those kinds of concerns once again, because I think we all understand that children across the, the school system really face different kinds of challenges and need to, to have those addressed very specifically. So I really do want to thank the, uh, school system for providing this, this presentation to us, and hope that more members of the community will have the opportunity to have an understanding of the accomplishments that the school system has achieved over the past year and will continue to achieve, I believe, because of their ability to take that information and translate it into programs to address additional needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGlinnan. I would, I will add that the, the video was actually done for convocation. That was to start our school year and, and say thank you to every single school for something that they've made a huge improvement in, but it also represented our, our theme for the year, which was, was growth and to keep growing and becoming stronger. One of the things we did just recently, well, not just recently, beginning of the year, every school had a significant achievement in a certain area, we had them share their strategies with other schools so that we could replicate some of the incredible increases across our division in, in coming years.
Okay, yeah. I had two questions real quick. First of all, I, I, let me echo what Dr. McGlinnan said. I think you've made phenomenal progress, and this really, really outlines that. I really appreciate the, the presentation. I'm a little bit of a stickler about definitions at times, though. The third slide, it started out, performance levels. Level one, green, at or above the standard. So whatever the standard is, it's at or above. Level two is near the standard, which is rather fuzzy, and level three says below the standard clearly. So I guess my question is, how is that standard defined? And, and, and how do you, how do you determine, what, what's the bracket? I mean, clearly, level two is below the standard, but then how far below? And how far below before you get into the red, level three? And that's, that's one question. The other one is something maybe I don't think you, maybe you don't have right now, but I would really be interested in, because it showed up in several of the slides, was how much, what percentage of our enrollment in the, in the system comes from economically disadvantaged homes? I think it's a lot higher than most of us realize in this community, and that's, that's an information I think we need to know and be able to share.
Absolutely. Mr. Walker, I know he's itching to give you some of those numbers because he's very involved in those numbers. The guy, the actual standards are set by the state, obviously, not by us. Mr. Walker?
For example, with the accreditation, uh, English reading performance, the state sets the minimum benchmark at seventy-five percent with proficiency. Mathematics, seventy percent, and science, seventy percent. Our economically disadvantaged rate for WJCC sits around thirty-six percent. So in comparison, York County's roughly twenty-nine to thirty percent.
And I believe our, our English learner population is significantly more than other local divisions as well, Mr. Walker?
It is. We're sitting around eight to almost nine percent now, and we're right there with Newport News for similar divisions.
So I guess my question is, on the areas where we, everything was green, but the areas where it's, where it's yellow, were those actually below those state standards? And if, and how far below the state standard did before you go from yellow to, to red?
No, I can't quote those numbers off the top of my head.
You see what I'm, I'm driving at?
Correct.
I'm trying to figure out, it's like a grading scale, you know, and A is from, you know, ninety-two or whatever up, or, but trying to figure out exactly how, how that, because it looks like that yellow is a fairly probably narrow band.
It is, actually. It's a range just underneath that proficiency go, um, green level status, so it's really close to the standard but not quite there. And when we have schools that are in that yellow range, that helps us to determine where do we need to provide some specific intervention and work to bring them up to that green level status.
And, but, but my, my assumption has probably been correct that, that, that it's a, it's a fairly narrow band that you have to work with.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There's one other comment on, on the yellow band. To have a yellow anywhere in your report card, you, you have to have two groups that are slightly below standard.
Yes.
Sean, if you wanted to just explain that a little bit as well, that'd be great.
We mentioned way back at the beginning that zero of our schools have a level-three-red status. You could see that on some of the middle and high schools. We had some yellow mixed in with the majority of that green. But if we get to beyond two student reporting groups having yellow, then we're looking at that level coming down.
Okay.
And so, for example, in the yellows at middle school, we have got some work to do with students with disabilities. That's one of our lower performing groups, even though we're above the state, we, we've some more work to do in that area, and that, we're working on that this year.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful.
See, we're, I just wanted to ask a quick follow-up if I could. Would you be able to send us the statistical information of a side-by-side comparison of WJCC with York, Hampton, since you've, the local, like, what, what is their percentage of economic disav, special ed, so we could have a side-by-side snapshot of that?
Sure, we'd be happy to send that.
And I know, I, I think Councilwoman Stacy Kerns-Sheeran taking the mayor's job, and then I saw supervisor Hippel had a question too, but...
The mayor's job?
Well, because she's supposed to, I, no.
I mean, I don't want it, let's be clear.
No.
If it's on the table, no, thank you.
I took his job.
But I do have, I do, can I go ahead and ask my question? Okay. Just to make you sure. So, well, first, I just want to say thank you and echo, echo the comments of Dr. McGlinnan and Mr. Eisenhour, and also appreciate- And also appreciate and, and kind of have a moment here to appreciate what Chairman Ordigo said in terms of really focusing in on that one priority and having that main priority and then supporting priorities around it. I think that that's, 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 that's a very like positive, um, step. And I, and I just want to say I see that and appreciate that very much. Uh, I had two questions. Uh, one was, there was something on the slide about col- like a, a, a standard or about college career and civic readiness index? And I was just wondering, what, what goes into that? What does that, what is that?
There are several components to, um, calculating that. But a big focus on college and career readiness has to do with RCT courses, job shadowing opportunities, earning credentials and things of that nature that forms that one portion of the accreditation.
Okay, okay. And then, uh, my second question is about, or it kind of comes from something you mentioned. You know, the state standards had changed and what was PALS was now VALS. And, and I do understand that ways of measuring things that the state sets can change and, and modify. Are there any changes on the horizon that would, that are going to impact what goes forward? I've heard about a few things, but to be totally honest, like, I, I think it'd be really helpful for a better understanding of what might be coming down the, the pike so that we can have an understanding going forward about how what we just saw, the measurements or the ways things are measured may change.
You just teed me up very nicely there because I, I was about to, before we finish today, say that we're, we're, we're working on greens and reds and yellows and something we've understood for a number of years. But everything is changing this, this year. We are actually in the new year for the new school performance and support framework, and it looks very different. So when we present to you next year, you're, it's not going to look anything like this at all. The, the proficiency standards will remain the same. The cut scores for tests will remain the same. We've just been informed of that, having really wanted that as superintendents as the whole system changes. We're in the process of educating our principals, our teachers about what the new framework means while still encouraging them to keep working. Uh, Mr. Walker's worked quite, quite a bit with this and we've been on several calls with the State Department. It's still, it's, it's final, but there's still work popping behind the scenes so we can fully understand what's expected. Mr. Walker, want to speak a little bit to the components of the framework?
Sure, I'd be glad to. I think what's important to know is that it's not changing our work. There's still a focus on proficiency and mastery with English reading, mathematics, science. Um, this, the new support framework that's coming forward for accreditation also honors student growth over time. It also continues the work with chronic absenteeism. Still looking at graduation data, um, various indicators with that. So none of that changes the work that's happening in our schools currently. What will change is how that's calculated and then reported out publicly next fall. We have four categories that will come forward. States define those as distinguished schools, meeting a certain benchmark within a certain band out of a 100-point scale. On-track schools are next. Off-track would be the next term. We don't care for that, but that's, we can't change that. And then the fourth, uh, performance would be needs intensive support. They did, the state did take our data from this past spring on the state ASOL assessments and put it into the new model just to see what it looked like so that school divisions could get a feel for that. We don't have any of our schools that are in needs intensive support. We have a couple that were right at that distinguished school mark. Majority are on track and we had one or two that were just one point off from being on track. But that's all very preliminary. In fact, some of those final details, especially around the high school, um, indicators are still being finalized.
So we're actually living this year through a year, but we don't know quite what we're trying to achieve. So it's a very, it's, it's a complex place to be. Usually you take a period of time to introduce a new system. The work has been ongoing for over two years, but I do feel that we're at a slight disadvantage. Every school division is in terms of implementing a brand-new system during the course of this year. I'll give you an example of something that, that will potentially happen. James Blair has made incredible improvement over the last year across the whole school. It's been amazing and one of the, the lowest chronic absenteeism rates because of the, the success they've had. They are fully accredited this year, but in the new system, even though their, the results say they're on track, they could be off track because they still have a federal indicator that they're working on. That's a, that's a passover from two years ago. So it's an interesting process. What they've done in the new system, they've brought this, the federal accountability system and the state accountability system into one. And part of the reasoning behind that was to offer support just for one system rather than two. So it's, it's, it has lots of potential as a system. We're very positive about it. We don't shy away from accountability, but the rate of change has been dramatic. And we're, we're, everybody's on catch-up. Thank you.
And in expressing how proud I am of the school division, you know, the administration, the teachers and all of the support staff that go into, um, creating the educational atmosphere for our students and seeing this success that you all achieved, uh, certainly coming out of the pandemic. But the, the rate of, this percentage of growth in some of these achievements has been phenomenal. I'm, I'm really excited about that. Um, and I know that that's, that momentum will carry forward. But as we look till next year, how do you set that benchmark? How do you set a goal to, to go even higher in, in some of these percentages? And I know it's, it's an ongoing, growing process and you learn from best practices and that type of thing. But you, you mentioned James Blair had significant, um, growth in, in the, in the decline of absenteeism. What do you attribute that to? Is it personnel? Is it outreach? And then how do you take that to other schools?
So literally we've shared all of our incredible strategies by school with each other. Every school sharing with each other their data, how they got there, the strategies they use so we could replicate some of the success across every single school. And Ms. Ordigo referenced, uh, we have a revamped our priorities in the strategic plan. They, they have the same language as before at the top, but we pushed the academic achievement to this key priority above everything else. And under that, there are, um, eight specific goals, all with measures and what we expect to achieve within four years. And, and we'll take a step in that progress each of the next four years. Dr. Worley and, and Mr. Walker can speak more exclusively to what happens at the school level. The division level targets are set, but the schools actually work based on their data. Do you want to speak to the process that we use that is very detailed and very data-driven and have used for, for many years?
So each school has a school improvement plan that's based directly off each year's data. And it's kind of like a continuous improvement cycle. Even, even the tiers that we're performing really high, we, we ask ourselves, how can we continue to grow and perform? You know, and push some of our more advanced students even to, even to improving their score. But specifically, we, we dig deep, we peel back those layers like we, we did in, we showed you in the slideshow of, um, different performing groups. We have teachers work together, share strategies that work the best. We have our collaborative teacher teams, which we've implemented over the last several years, which really, really digs deep into, okay, here's the data, here's what it says. We need to find out why is this happening and let's implement a strategy to help this student or this group of students move forward. So it's pretty intensive. We have check-ins throughout the year, mid-year. The superintendent, myself and a group of us go over and meet with teams at each school where they celebrate their progress. They talk about what's working well, what they may need. And as a division, we, we put in, um, some support if they need extra resources to really finish strong. We have that theme every year. We're going to finish strong. We're going to go green. We're going to meet the benchmark. So I, I mean, I can't tell you enough, I cannot stress enough how hard teachers work and how much they care about every kid. They'll, they'll go to the 10th mile to figure out what, what I need to do to help this one student, whether it's graduation or, or passing an SOL test or learning to read. They're all in it 110% plus, so.
Now, I could add to that. In those school improvement plans, uh, several years ago, probably seven years ago, we, we, our plans are very focused. You don't have 10 different directions moving at once. There's a math, there's a science, there's an English, there's a chronic absenteeism and others. And each school, based on their data, for example, if we have a yellow on the chart, that school will have a specific plan to address that specific need in a specific school. So it's very targeted and it's very data-driven with a plan for improvement. And we monitor and provide resources as needed. And we look across the whole system and if one school is underperforming, then that school gets additional resources and, and help to try to, to bring them up to standard.
If I could speak to what Dr. Hammer's saying with the high school. We've, um, that one of the third goal for that is definitely the graduation rate. And so we've put a lot of work into, over the last several years of seeing what support and resources we need to help every student graduate. Our, our goal is on time, but if we can get you there in five years, we'll take that as well, so.
In fact, our focus has been the graduation index, which is more than four years because we have a lot of students who do GED. And our English learners, getting them to the point of graduating is really, really important. And that's how, why it's so high.
Supervisor Hippel?
So I'd like to thank everybody for this presentation and the school board for all your hard work and, and checking these items and, and getting with staff. And staff, thank you very much. And most all, I'd like to thank the teachers on the bottom ground there, working every day, working with these students and all. You know, it's amazing what great amount of teachers we have in James City County and very proud of that. I was looking on, um, 13 to 17 on the, um, display there, um, subgroups. I noticed our subgroups are not at the point of where we were back in 2018, 19. And, you know, as we, we've, this is a great presentation. We've made great strides and all that. But as, as you know, as everything goes, you know, we, we, we can make great strides in a lot of areas and miss a group. And I think this group is one that may get missed, not on purpose, but may end up falling through the cracks quicker than some of the others. So, you know, my question would be, is, is these, the, the subgroups something that we probably ought to look into a little deeper as far as how we can advance these subgroups and, and help these subgroups along to, to catch up with the rest of the students out there? And I know, you know, there's a lot of things that we don't know about that goes on in school as far as getting a subgroup up to a certain level, which is really counting on our instructors in order to, to do this. It takes a tremendous amount of time and extra staff. It's not the same as the regular groups of students that were not in the, um, subgroups that we have in this. But I've noticed on all of them, we're kind of, they're, they're missing the level that we would like to see them get back to and exceed further. So is there, is there something that we have that we're looking at in the future to catch these subgroups so they don't fall through the crack?
I'll say, I think it goes right back to the conversation about the school improvement plans and each school using their data to push, um, all of the student groups, uh, forward with that, but being very intentional about specific, um, student groups and moving the needle with that. It's hard work.
It is. And I, and I don't want anybody, anybody to think that, that, you know, we're, we're just looking at one thing. We're looking at all students in the home. And, um, and this just happens to be with the numbers showing that these groups are falling behind. And all those areas, they're doing a lot better, but they are still falling behind. And how do we try to correct that for the next year? And, and with all the plans that are changing and, you know, it may look totally different next year. It may look a little worse with the new stuff that's coming down that y'all are going to have to deal with.
A lot of it, I will say, comes down to that individualized instruction. And the needs, it's, you have to remember the needs change every year. We might see it at one, it's a whole different group of kids the next year and the needs may be different. But one other thing that you, we, we showed you the pass rate of individualized subgroups, but it's important to also remember that we have a lot of students, one student may be part of the percentage in three of those. So they might be across three or four, or they might be just in one. So it, it is challenging, but that's why we have to dig deep, pull back the layers, look at what each kid's need is. We look at different strategies. We put students in small groups. There's after-school tutoring. There's a whole, I mean, the teachers could probably rattle off to you a list of strategies, but it all comes down to what does that student need? And sometimes the needs are more than just academic. Um, and it's just surrounding the, the student with everything that they need to get them where they need to go.
It is. And, and with having so many children in school through the years, myself and, and dealing with James City, um, and Williamsburg School System, the, um, it's, it's amazing how our teachers do so well at identifying items that need work and, and know ahead of time. And so it's not that our teachers are not seeing this. They're working very hard to fix this and just, just making sure that if any assistance we need to do, that we make sure that they have the capability of, of helping these students, you know, get up to the level that the rest of the students are. And that'll lead me into my, um, another thing is that, you know, our, and it, this is a, a boogaboob at times. Teachers in their raises and all that, and we've seen that that needs to move forward. And it's going to constantly move forward. It's the same thing we fight in James City County with our staff. But when we do it, we look at it and go, okay, what part of our staff needs what? And it may be the fire department, it may be the police department, it may be parks and wrecks. And we deal with that department separately. And I know the school is, does it a little differently and, and y'all do y'all's thing. I'm not suggesting y'all, y'all are the school board, y'all do your thing. But is there a way to look at the teachers and go, okay, maybe the teachers get this much of an increase, staff gets this much of an increase? And kind of, rather than saying, okay, everybody gets a 3%, a 5%, a 8% or whatever across the board. And, um, because when you're, when you're in the, the upper level, 8% or 3% is quite a bit. When you're at the lower level, starting out, that's not that much. So kind of balancing that to kind of bring our teachers up a little bit as we, as we move forward. And that's y'all's job. I know we fund that portion, but, but, um, just looking at some other ways and, and, and then comparing, comparing, um, Hampton, Newport News and our wealth level is, is different. And, you know, it's, it is what it is, you know? A wealthier community has more resources to do more things than a community that, that doesn't have the wealth. And, um, so if we're compared to Hampton and Newport News, which doesn't have the wealth we have per capita, then is that a good comparison? Should we compare ourselves to a wealthier area that, that has more resources? You know, so it may shed a light on a little bit differently as far as how we, you know, look at things and, and are we where we need to be or are we below that? And with our level of, of financing that we have and we put into the schools and, and, and we try to keep up with everything you need, are we where we need to be? I know we probably, I would say, just off thinking about it, we probably put more in than a lot of Hampton, Newport News and the jurisdictions there. And so with that, are we getting where we need to be? Or is there something we need to do as a group working together to try to fill that?
Mr. Walker, I can probably address some of that. Um, you know, first of all, our community gives more to schools. Our funding partners give more to schools, but the funding that each school division receives is similar. In fact, Hampton and Newport News may be better funded because they have a lot more state money and they have a lot more federal money. So they actually, in some cases, have more resources than we have. So to compare is, is really quite appropriate. The other, the other thing I would want to, to mention is the, and speaking to, I guess, a little bit for the board, we, we're, we're undergoing a pretty significant compensation study. Want to speak to that, Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I was going to say that the board has been discussing a lot of potential options for this upcoming budget season. We are undergoing a compensation study to, um, assess where we are in terms of different pay groups for different, uh, pay groups for different job types in, in relation to surrounding communities and see where we might need to make adjustments that are not across the board, that maybe are, look disproportionate in a given year, but because we need to catch up in certain areas. We also want to look at the job types that have been notoriously very difficult to fill that have a ripple effect on everything else and quality of life for teachers when, when you don't have enough bus drivers and you don't have enough aides and support staff. That can potentially affect a teacher's life and ability to teach and enjoy their job maybe more than their own, their own salary can. So, so the board is very aware of the different scenarios that we need to look at and, and plan to address that.
And actually, we took a big step last year. We gave a certain raise across the board, but we also targeted teacher salaries at certain years of experience that were further behind other systems. And so we give more money to certain groups of, of teachers at certain stages. We also targeted grades four to eight on our support scale, bus drivers, custodial staff, teacher assistants, and gave a bigger raise to them last year as well. So now, when we started that last year, it, it's like a four-year plan. Do keep moving that way. So we're very much along the lines that you're, you're speaking of and going that direction as a school division.
And I know any way we can help, and Scott has done very well as far as leading our group and, and finding the holes and the, in the areas that, hey, we need to, you know, prop this up, we need to work on this area and, and trying to put it, like y'all are doing in a, in a four-year, five-year, eight-year plan or whatever, as how, you know, because we're all limited on the amount of funds. But I hate to hear when we lose someone, a teacher or one of our employees that goes somewhere else that has the experience and has the knowledge and likes working here, but has to make a few more dollars and needs to move somewhere else. And if we can keep them here, then we're, we're better served in the long run.
Yeah, and I believe we're all challenged by that. Would address your, your other question that you started with in terms of providing certain resources to certain groups of students. For example, in the budget coming up this year, there will be a request for several more teachers to work with English learners, and that's SOQ-driven and code-defined. And so we will be asking for resources for certain groups of students to really put an emphasis on bringing up those student populations. Also, students with disabilities, English learners, economically disadvantaged students, their results went down further and they suffered more during the pandemic, and therefore the bounce back has been slower in some populations. But we see incredible increases and we've used strategies that are working, and we're going to continue to, to do that.
And I want to thank you, you and your staff and the board as far as, you know, each year trying to watch their budget and tighten the budget down in order to return money back. And that money now will, you know, of course, got to be voted on by the entire board, but we're hoping to put that back in the early childhood room and, and, you know, and help those gaps and that sort of thing. But, you know, it's, it's very much appreciated and, and I think it should be something that is put out there so that, you know, all of James City County and Williamsburg understands that, you know, we're working as a team, we've got each of us got to have, have different jobs and that's why, but we try to work as a team, supporting the school system and, and making sure that y'all have what you need to do, your job, but also that, you know, you are looking at returning funds in that way and have been for years. So thank you for that.
Jen, about your legislative priority, working with the SBA, because I know VACO has made it our number one priority with the J-Lark study and looking at the state hopefully changing their funding formula as they woefully underfunder public, underfund public education and the Commonwealth, and it is picked up by the localities, the majority of. Wondering if the SBA has asked you all to adopt something similar in your legislative priorities and when you will have. I know in the past, we had made some strides to try to go together to Richmond, and then that kind of stopped, just to see if, if that might be something that we, we might try to do again as we try to move forward there. So that's one question, a, a comment being, I certainly appreciate all that is being done in the schools. It is tremendous. We, I got to accompany Councilwoman Ramsey and Ms. Jen to Berkeley Middle School. I finally did tell your principal to hush up because I was afraid Ms. Jen was going to move him to another school, because he's, that's just tremendous what they're doing there and how student-centered they are. But just always a good reminder that not everything can be done in the school building. There's a lot of outside pressures that students are under and families are under. And you can do a whole lot during the day, but there can also be something that happens at night that totally undoes everything that has just happened during the day. So I appreciate all that is being done at the schools, but it's just a good reminder to all of us, I think, that families are under increasing pressure and stressors at home. And so sometimes schools have to start over the next day. But it, just curious about the VSA question.
Yes, that is a, that is a legislative priority for the VSA, and it is certainly a legislative priority for the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And we are, we more than happy to work in any form of partnership with you and any of our other funding partners to, to lobby our, our legislators. Happy to join you. We can go together to Richmond, and we have a legislative conference planned for the end of January, but we can certainly make other time available as well, if that's what it takes. Just on behalf of the school board, I want to say, thank, you know, thank you to, to both governing bodies for your continued support and your interest and your, your interest in hearing our success stories and wanting to share it. We appreciate the opportunity. Not everyone gets the chance to watch the school board meetings on a Tuesday night, so this is a great chance to, to share, again, the, the hard work. And I know everyone knows this, but I want to point out that the, the work that went into the 2023-24 results didn't begin in September of 2023. They began multiple years before that with, and then re-began after a pandemic. So, so the, the fruit of, the seeds that were planted for the, the fruit that we're now harvesting was planted all along and, and a great, with, with blood, sweat, and tears from superintendent all the way down to support staff, you know, anyone, custodians even, who know, who know our kids and who, who love our students and everyone in between who's worked really hard to make sure that each child is seen and known and, and can succeed. And so I, I want to commend Dr. Herron for, for that work and all senior staff and, and everyone all the way, all the way down. And just also want to reiterate that this board is interested in furthering communication with both bodies if there's information you want or you need to make decisions regarding schools. And you have a tough job to choosing, you know, setting priorities within our community because everyone is, everyone's deserving. So we understand that it's hard to make those choices and whatever we can help with, with offering additional information or presentation that you need, we're happy to communicate with you because we want you to, to feel that you know exactly where every dollar is going, that you can answer to your constituents when they ask you, where's, where are my dollars going? We understand the need to answer to taxpaying constituents and, and say, this is where it's going and this is what it's producing. So we want you to have that information. And so we, yeah, we look forward to any further communication and partnership. And community, with community partnerships, touch on what Chair Larson said, that it is, it is not all, not everything can be done within the four walls of a school. And so where there might be need to think about other innovative partnerships or other agencies that we're already funding through, through, you know, local government that might be able to partner in a different way than maybe we thought about it. So just, this board is open to those conversations, is what I wanted to say. And before I go too far, I know Mrs. Hunley has been signaling to me for a long time she wanted to say something, so.
Jump in. When Councilwoman Stacy Kerns Schur asked the question about anything that may be coming down, sometimes when we introduce new testing things like vowels, there can be a change. So that could be a change. And then we have a new reading curriculum, so we never know how that's going to balance out. And also, I would love that anytime when we talk, when we give credit, we, we do typically say teachers, but we have instructional staff. And if any of you have been in the buildings, they are with children. They're not running off work, putting up bulletin boards, things like that. They are working with students. So I synonymously would like to say whenever we include teachers, teachers do a lot, but our instructional assistants are there, if they're the right hand, they're the left, and they are working as hard. And I just wanted the viewing public to hear that, along with these wonderful Go Green results, that it, it does take, it takes a village, it takes the whole school, but it's not just teachers, it's, it's everyone and, and the instructional staff.
Before, oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'll, I'll finish up with this.
I, I wanted to address your question more specifically about the VSA. There's about eleven priorities that the VSA has identified. They're going to boil it down to about eight. There's a meeting coming up on the Joint Subcommittee on Education that the General Assembly has before the joint money committees, the governor presents, I think, December twenty-first on his caboose budget. So there, the numbers, and I'll just read the numbers, and then you can, I can send it to you further later on. But number one is to address technical formula issues. It's like every year, they kind of, in the caboose budget, they kind of like, how do they kind of address the need of inflationary? That's number one. Number four is to continue great recession cost savings. So there's support caps there. I think it's like the greatest thing that the General Assembly will be addressing for the next two to four years would be the support cap stuff. And then number six is using divisional averages instead of linear weighted averages. That's typically something that they're going to see in the 2030 session. They said they would identify changing the full formula at that point. So there's a lot of stuff going on in the state government when it comes to how the formula is being formulated. And the J-Lark is pushing most of that because legislators, there's a new class of legislators that are like all for the J-Lark changes. It, it's so needed because the education budget in the state is running off of pre, like 2004. Like, no one in our locality is budget off 2004 funding. We budget off the here and now, but we've been funding education before 2008 recession. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and it's a, it's a ginormous lift. There's, I think, one, like 2.3 billion dollars that was announced at the, the state's appropriations retreat that they have to find a way to allocate. It's, of course, the governor and, and the General Assembly are up in arms about what they're going to do with that, whether it's tax rebates or going towards education, which is what I think the Senate and the House are looking to do because of this J-Lark report. So I'd say just keep abreast and, and lost in about the changes coming for the standards. I think it's important that we understand that the governor and, and the Department of Education are proposing this new change for the, but the General Assembly also weighs in before July first, which is when it fully enrolls. So there's going to be changes that come with it through legislation as well. I think there's like thirty-seven bills from one side of the aisle already and then a couple from my brother friends on the other side of the aisle about just seeing it actually slowly come out because it is a dramatic, dramatic change going from like where we are to a one-year implementation. And that's something I think all the associations from VACO, the superintendents, and the school boards have all said, like, this is too fast, too much. It's not like we don't, we, we welcome a new standard. I think high standards, everyone says that, but it's really tough to kind of, we just told you these great things, and then we're going to see a bunch of yellows and reds the next year because you're jumping into something that we don't fully understand and it's not defined definitionally. And they don't even know. So it's, it's a lot of work. So anyways, I'm happy to talk anything about state government. I think it's something I've been trying to push a lot more as my, educate my board and, and the people I speak to. But I live this, I do this every day, and it's, so I find it fun, and I don't have much else to do anyway. So give me a call.
Thank you. Before we, well, you'll adjourn, Ms. Ortego, but let me take a moment on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to thank you, but most especially thank Dr. Herron for your service to our school division. It will be a sad day on the last day of January as you leave, leading this school division through the pandemic, leading this community really. And I know you took undue criticism because people were fearful. But to come out on the other side, to see the results that we see today with your leadership is much appreciated, and we want to thank you and let you know that you will be missed. So thank you very much.
This, this role has been the greatest honor of my life. Thank you. And I appreciate your support through eight years of ups and downs and pandemic and politics and every other P that goes along with it. It's, it's been a wonderful, a wonderful job. It's been a wonderful experience for me. I've loved this community, I love the school division, and I'll continue to do so. So thank you for the honor.
We have a, as a school board, a very big task ahead of us to, to fill the, the big shoes that will be left behind. Although Dr. Herron is small in stature, she leaves big shoes behind. So, are there any other questions or comments?
Just real quick, I'd like to thank Councilman Rogers for being here with us. This is his last meeting as a member of council, and so thank you. And so maybe we can give Caleb a round of applause.
It's, it's made much easier with the school board and school administration who make this job for us as funding partners easier. So thanks really and credit to you all and your team.
All right, are we, any other, I don't want to cut anyone off.
I would just say one more thing. I know this has been a year of a lot of back and forth between the city and the county regarding the future of a joint school division or not. But one thing that I hope has been abundantly clear, as we've had those discussions, is that on both sides, there has been 110% support for public education in this community and the fact that we wanted all students to succeed, whether they lived in the city of Williamsburg or whether they lived in James City County. And I think no matter what happens moving forward, that is what the same goal is. And I know that my colleagues have felt that as we've worked through this. So there's been a lot of noise, but I just want to be clear that the noise may have overshadowed the deep appreciation and goal for this board to support a quality schools, school system. And I know that that's been the same for my colleagues on the city, so.
You're right. Thank you, Ruth, for those comments. We, the conversations that we're having at, at this municipal level has nothing, is not a reflection or negative thoughts about the quality of the public education that, that we are being able to deliver our community through the WJCC. And so we really do appreciate and applaud all of your hard work and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say, if I could just say a thank you without crying, that would be wonderful. Yes, I'm sorry, very emotional, it's a big emotional decision to, to leave such a wonderful season. But thank you so much for your incredible support over all of the years. Thank you for always supporting our schools. Thank you for coming to these meetings, asking good questions, but always being there for us as a school division. I've, I've got to go out saying, I think we're better together, and I think we're strong together. I think we have a wonderful school division that serves a wonderful community. And it would be remiss of me if I didn't say that publicly because I purposely don't comment in public on, on the discussions that are, that are taking place. But thank you also for entrusting the school board and me as superintendent to do our jobs as well because that is incredibly important. So thank you for everything.
I think, do you go, or do I?
I think I'm first.
Okay.
On behalf of the school board, thank you all for, for coming and thank you for your, again, for your support and your interest in your questions. And we look forward to working on the next budget cycle with you all. And without further ado, the Williamsburg James City County School Board is now adjourned.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knell? Mr. Hippel? Aye. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Niceau?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. We're adjourned.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Pique?
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dan?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Kerns Shear?
Aye.
We are adjourned.